Call the Planning Board and Zoning Commission meeting to order for September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. Can I have a call to order, please? I mean, roll call.
Robert.
Present.
Gray.
Sorry, here.
Tupin?
Here.
Echo Bell? Boise?
Here.
Conley?
Yes.
Eve Benadetta?
Yep, here. Okay, I'll have a motion to approve the minutes for September tenth, two thousand and twenty five.
I move to approve the minutes of September tenth, as written.
There is a second?
A little second.
Any discussion, corrections?
You actually do a really good job of minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, my name had, should have a T in it.
Yeah, probably should.
My last name should have a T in it, but I abstained.
Okay.
Oh, actually, I did have a question on four B. It says Tupin, appointed two planning board member, a new planning board member, two resolutions passed, including airport safety.
Yeah, we did not do that.
There were no resolutions for airport safety.
So we want to cross that out? The two resolutions passed that the...
Yeah, I would just strike that whole second half of the sentence. Just appointed new planning board member.
Did the resident just copy paste something?
I might have heard.
Did you get that?
Yes.
All right, any other comments?
No, that was it. Didn't read, so I could see it.
Do we need to say as amended?
I would like to change my motion, so I'm going to move to accept the September tenth minutes as amended.
May I have a second?
All right, can I have a roll call?
Robert?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Boise?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Eve Benadetta?
Yes. All right, next on the agenda is communications from the Board and Council. Urban Renewal Agency update, we haven't, haven't met since the last meeting. And probably forgot, I forgot to put on the agenda a discussion about maybe appointing a new representative, council representative to the Board, to the Urban Renewal Agency, but we'll have to do that. Put that on the next agenda. City Council Representative update.
I was not at the council meeting, but I imagine that during the mayor's comments, he can catch us up on any council comments. Or if Andy would like to.
I don't remember that there was anything that affected planning and zoning.
Yeah.
We did the second reading on the trash ordinance, second reading on resort tax changes, resolution not to have a general vote because the mayor and four members of the city council were all running unopposed. So we thought we didn't need to spend four thousand dollars so that everybody can vote for the only person they could vote for.
And we sold some surplus property, we authorized to sell some surplus properties, so if anybody needs a back truck, it'll be online at the government surplus site.
Or another, there's another vehicle, too.
Yeah, a vehicle, what we just said.
With the back truck in.
And it wasn't a Skid steer, but it was something kind of like that.
Yeah, Skid was in the name.
That it?
That's all that was passed at the council meeting.
All right, communication from the mayor.
None at this time, thank you. I guess one thing I will share, I don't know, and I'll look to you to, but I know, and I want to say it's in November, that what do they call that, the community for provocative...
Form of provocative issues?
Yeah, the form of provocative issues for the community is doing a housing one, which is one they tend to do on a yearly basis. And they have a couple of people showing up on that, and they've reached out to us, and I'm actually going to have, I'm going to go and Brian's going to go, too, because we're going to talk about some of the stuff that's happening just from a private sector that's being done. So we'll go take five or ten minutes, but it might be something of interest to this group for those who aren't part of that. And as long as they don't talk about it or make decisions, it's okay to go to that.
I think so. Do you want to talk about the Bastion property?
If you'd like me to. In tomorrow's paper, the public notices are out for fourteen days, in one case, and fifteen days, in the other case, for a public hearing before we issue the flood permit and the DEQ. And what that means is on Friday, October tenth, if there's any concerns or complaints from the general public, I'll take them out and eliminate them. And then issue, issue a notice proceed on Friday, and my guess is that there will be the mitigation work. There's a day's worth of mitigation work on Monday, and I'm looking at Tuesday, October fourteenth, being the day where we have all been waiting for, when there will be large equipment and buildings falling and coming down. And I'm looking forward to taking them two to three days to, you know, make the, it may take them a little longer than that. But as soon as that starts coming down, then we're all going to be very happy. And I promised, I promised a marshmallow roast, I'm bringing the marshmallows and smore mix of bear tooth RCND. But I suspect there'll be a few other people who show up and join us.
The eighteenth?
One, pardon?
When?
October fourteenth, Tuesday. Is the day that I expect that we're going to start seeing substantial dropping of that building.
Cool, I got a great view.
It only took two and a half years.
That's, that's the one on nineteenth, right?
Yep.
Nineteenth, yeah. That's actually three years, isn't it, from twenty-two to twenty-five? Three years.
That's kind of slow, but he does get it done eventually. Thank you for your help on that.
Red tape.
You think?
And so it was just waiting for approval from DEQ to move ahead with that?
There were actually two or three different bureaucracies and elements of that. They needed to put their, because it's in the floodplain, they had to, there were two things. DEQ had to submit for the mitigation stuff, and then also before the city could issue a floodplain, there was several agencies that had to weigh in and say that it was not an issue, and they reviewed the plans initially. We hired an outside company, Tetra Tech, to handle that, and will receive that project. And their initial submission of homework came back and required some changes, and so that added a little bit of an additional time. If I had a, if I had a time machine and knew what I know now and went back, we'd actually called out that that stuff could have been done several months ago, and I didn't recognize that it had not been heard until it was time to submit the homework anyway. So we just went, and in fairness, now's probably better time to be knocking it down than the middle of July or August anyway, so. It's working out as it should.
Is it just that building or the one next to it as well, that used to be McCambles?
So it is, it is just the Rocky Fork in it at this point. However, we are still in discussions with the Eagles Nest, which includes
the McCambles.
Five to seven different properties, which includes the McCambles property that's in there. The owner of the Eagles Nest actually has an option on that as well, so that's part of the same application. He would have to close that out before the city acquired it, but I think he's waiting to see how and where that goes, so.
Okay.
So three more years.
I, if that one comes through, the funding sources on that, we should hear something before the end of this year, if it's available.
He has to kind of call me back and look into it.
Yeah, I, we asked them yet about monthly, so. It, it, this, even, even this thing on Thursday and Friday was requiring daily follow-ups. And even tonight, when we were waiting for this meeting, I was making sure we're ready for the stuff that comes tomorrow. So it's just, it's just, it just is a project that requires constant tending, and we've got good partners that are helping us do that. And like I said, very, very soon, we will see the results. And by the way, it's still not done at that point, because we still have our bank reconstruction we need to do as well. But nobody had stopped me on the street yet and said, when are you doing the bank reconstruction next to the Rocky Fork Inn, so.
Not yet.
I'm going to start.
There are people, but there are people, they are people who do bank reconstruction for a living. Nobody in the community has stopped and asked me.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. There's no new business. Next on the agenda is public comment on any of the agenda items. So if anybody wants to step forward and state their name and address and comment on any, any items that are currently on the agenda, and then that's primarily review of the two thousand and twenty-five zoning regulation update.
Yeah, if you come up to them, these mics can pick, pick it up, and there's, cut some notes over on the side if you want to just read those really quick, and then you go.
Notes, oh.
Be respectful, state your name for the record.
Okay.
And then talk to the good-looking gentleman in the blue shirt.
And then, and also your address.
Okay, so I'm Christina Quihano, and my address is seven oh five North Howser Avenue. And I also own a small commercial property in the C four district, which is why I'm here, out of questions regarding that property. Because I, I don't understand the process too well, but I understand that we're reviewing some zoning issues having to do with the downtown historic district. And I own the, I own a small unit in the Waters Building that technically, the address is technically not on Broadway, it's on Twelfth Street. And it's where the Bear Tooth Medicinal Dispensary is, and I just want to be aware of any issues that are coming up in terms of zoning that might affect the dispensary, because I was told that that might be on the agenda. And I just wanted to, you know, know what was going on, and I also wanted the planning board to be aware of the fact that that dispensary that is in the C four district is not actually on Broadway. So it really shouldn't be impacting Broadway or the historic district per se. And even the legal address per the cadastral is actually Twelfth Street and not Broadway. So I just wanted that to be taken in consideration in terms of any decisions that might be made in terms of zoning for the current dispensary that's there, or any changes in the zoning for the dispensary, because that would significantly be of an interest to me, as well as the long-term renters that I've had there who've done a wonderful job establishing a business that has not impacted the historic district in any other way other than bringing in some really good tax revenue that's been helpful to the city. So that's why I'm here.
All right, thank you.
I was going to say, are you going to leave, or were you going to stay for the rest of the meeting?
I want to stay for the rest of the meeting only because I was under the impression that that might be a topic of discussion. Is it going to be? Because if not, I don't really necessarily want to stay, but.
But I want to, I will come out and chat with you afterwards, because Greg had, McGregor had reached out to me.
Yeah.
Already, and I poured some information on, but I'll let, I'll let the chairman speak if he wants to, to address that.
We're, we're going to be discussing permitted and conditional uses for commercial activities in all the zones tonight, and that is, I mean, right now, it's marijuana dispensaries are permitted in, in C four as a conditional use, and also C three. C, C three north, yeah.
South?
Well, that's the permitted use in C four and conditional uses in in C three south and north, so.
Mr. Chairman, and maybe you could, it would help if you would clarify what the impact of any changes that do eventually come out of zoning, how they impact, or rather, don't impact existing businesses, too, I think that's part of the concern.
Yeah, any existing use is grandfathered in if there is, if there is a change in zoning, but, yeah. But we had, we'll probably get to a discussion around the marijuana dispensaries later on this evening, so.
So probably a good idea to stay?
If you wish to, yes.
It's always, but being informed is always good.
I think so, yeah, and James wanted to make it, but he had other commitments, so, kind of his here as well.
Yeah, and we had shared, I had shared the ordinance with him earlier.
He said, he said that to me.
And so the, the big thing is this doesn't impact existing anything.
Okay, there's just one clause in here that wasn't clear to me, and I don't want to take up time with the discussion, but it just...
And that's the ordinance, which is city council, not planning board.
Okay, it's something about however, should an existing marijuana business reside at a location that has been rezoned? So that's my only concern, is, I mean, you guys just randomly rezone it?
They can, and what that says is they don't go through the new process that they did. So what they said, so take your, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
So, so what that says is if there's an existing business, so let's suppose that through this discussion, they said it's not allowed there, it's allowed someplace else. If the business wanted to go there, the process wouldn't be opened up to everybody in the world, it would just be allowed for that one business. But that's if they wanted to go someplace else. As far as if it's in your, in that existing location and an established business, no impact.
It can't be forced to move, even if it is, you know.
Correct, it cannot be forced, that's, and that's what he means by grandfathered in, so.
Okay.
It, it, it cannot be forced to move under any circumstances. If they moved and wanted to come back, that would be a problem.
Okay. Well, that's good to know, because you hear things through the grapevine, and you're like, why?
And it's always accurate, especially if you read it on Facebook.
Yeah, definitely, yeah. No, this was not, but anyway, yeah, I appreciate that, but I think I'll stay and just listen, I probably won't understand half of the stuff, but.
All right.
For the tribe.
Is there anybody online?
I'm just going to add one more.
Oh, go ahead, Greg.
So this is just step one in a hundred step process, so we still have every planning board hearing and the, or meeting, and then we'll have a hearing at the planning board level. Once they recommend it for approval to city council, then city council will have their public hearing as well. So there's multiple, multiple opportunities to, if you re-watch it or can't make it to a meeting, you can come comment, and they can choose to address it again, so.
Oh, with future meetings?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So this is just very, very early in the process.
But, but there is no flavor or possible variation where it forces an existing business out.
Okay.
That's not an option.
Okay, and one last question, because then maybe if these are addressed, I may not, it's not like another big, super bad of meetings after working all day, but if it should change owners, and if the owners, they, everything gets transferred, including the location, would new owners be able to stay at that same location as well?
Yes, because we, we addressed that in the ordinance, and from the zoning, it's just a business changing.
Another, if another business were to come in.
If he sells his dispensary to someone else who wants to operate it as a dispensary. Yes. It's still grandfathered in. In that same location.
Yeah.
Okay.
If they wanted to change it to a dispensary and lab.
Yeah.
That's a change of use.
That's not anything, I would be in support of, as the owner of that unit, so. Okay, I think I've had my points heard and my questions answered, and I really appreciate it, and, yeah, I think I will go ahead.
And you can always submit your comments in writing as well, just as documentation that.
Okay. Thank you very much, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just step out if that's all right. Oh, how come, that's, because that's you changing it.
All right, any, nobody online, I guess, right? So we'll continue on with review, the zoning regulations, and I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. The last meeting, we made it through residential. We didn't, we, we got rid of breaking it up in the table, but we made it through the
The top part.
The top part, we'll call it. We did kind of breeze through manufactured homes and RV parks, so I didn't know, I didn't know the planning board wanted to talk more about RV parks at this meeting, or manufactured home communities, or if we'd like to come back to that after we've kind of gone through.
I think, I think we want to come back to that, but I will point out to the Board that RV parks were not addressed in our growth policy, and that was not addressed as a priority in any of our public meetings that we had prior to that. So I think we need to sort of keep that in mind, that growth policy sets parameters around which zoning is, is related to, so. I don't know, you might want to speak to that as well, Greg, but.
Yeah, the, especially for conditional uses, growth policy is one of the criteria. It has to be reflected in growth policy. There is, it's worth noting that Alpine Motel or RV Park, there is an RV park in C three N, it's where I think that one is. So there is a precedent set in that area, so it would be one area to consider that maybe does need a conditional use of, of it, because someone across the street might also want an RV park, so.
Yeah, the only reason that was granted as a conditional use is because it was illegally instructed without, without coming before the city council, and there is a lot of discuss, or before the planning board, and there was a lot of miscommunication apparently between city staff on who approved what and didn't approve. A breakdown between the planning department and the building, and the public works is basically what happened. So.
So an RV park is housing, but housing is addressed in the, in the growth policy.
It, it could be interpreted in the form of housing, depending on what definition we use, or what definition the planning board.
We could defensibly leave it in there.
Yeah, and I think the, the community and the public might have a different interpretation, but the planning board is welcome to make these zoning regulations as strict or open to development, if they'd like, if you see that.
I mean, we also threw out, I shouldn't use that word, we didn't throw it out. We discussed the dry RV park, I mean, its possibility for the south, you know, right around nineteenth. And I think there might be another place in the, in the future that's within the floodplain, and.
Well, I think we need to think about where that would go, and to me, a logical place would be at the rodeo grounds. Next, next to the.
Which already have RV facilities up, up there.
What's that?
We already have RV facilities around the, around the rodeo ground, and then even on the south side of the, of the buildings up on the fairground.
Well, the danger there is that during the Fourth of July, it's packed up there, so to have permanent would impact the rodeo parking, which is always problematic.
Well, I think also up there, just considering the ownership of the rodeo grounds being city land, and then also rodeo and county, there's a lot of players involved. I think that they would absolutely take that into consideration. Whenever they are doing any sort of leases for that space, there'd be time limits, and that'd just be a part of the business model. But, I mean, again, you're right in the fact that you wouldn't have the long-term living, but I don't necessarily think that would eliminate the possibility of it being used for six months of the year for lifties, or, you know, the month of August for certain residency.
The south end of the fairgrounds is, basically goes unused ninety percent of the time, you know, so.
And we could, if we did a dry RV park, we could limit it, how long you could stay there.
Right, well, I mean, I, my wife and I just, we had to be in buildings at a ridiculous hour last, last week, and so we stayed in Laurel at the park at the river, and that's a dry RV park. Revenue maker for the city, it's twenty-five bucks for a back inside, thirty dollars for a pull-through. But, and I mean, it's all, they, there's no staff there, it's all done online through the city of Laurel. And, I mean, it's not, I think we talked, kind of talked about management would be a hassle and all this, but there's, there's ways we could do it, I'm not saying we should do it, but I mean, I don't, and I, as far as the growth policy, I think having it on here doesn't say that that's what we're looking for, that we, we haven't addressed it in the growth policy, because we already have, you know, have the one, and up around the fairground, but.
Well, like I say, that, that was an illegal use when it was.
Well, I, I know, but it's there now, that's.
That, yeah, but that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't mean we now have to.
No, no, I agree, Jeff.
So that's the only point, so.
We're not, we're not going to make it something that that's what we want on Broadway.
Anyway, unless, so we can move on, I think what we talked about last time is we would defer the discussion until after we had a chance to review what kinds of conditions.
Everything, yeah.
So we had a better, better sense of it, but, so I guess.
So Greg has it right now under C.
Right now, it's in all the.
One, two, north, C three north, and south, and C four.
And probably one and two, probably no.
Yeah.
Now, it's conditional through all the commercials?
Yeah.
C one and C two, should be in there.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I'd question it being conditional in C one, because that's business transition.
Exactly.
And primarily residential.
And C two is this little section over here.
Same, yeah.
C two is all of Little Italy, yeah.
So probably C one and C two wouldn't even be conditional, it just wouldn't be permitted.
So we'll take, take it off of everything but C three north and
And south.
C three south.
Is that okay?
That works for me.
Yeah.
Did you get that, Greg, take it off as C one and two?
And four, or Z four?
Z four.
For now, until we get into that.
Okay, yeah, so Jeremy and I will work on maybe some draft for the few standards.
Any examples might be helpful.
Examples, sure. Okay.
Okay.
So I think where we are now is just starting down the rest of the uses.
Yeah, and I think ideally what Jeremy and I were thinking when we were talking about it was, as we go through this, see if any of these can be, see if any of these can be pushed together into the same category, and then we can update the definition to include them, so there's not, you know, three lines of distribution, I think, is one that shows up multiple times in three different ways. So, but these are the ones from the previous table, so
Sure.
Probably worth just going through it and updating.
We have assisted living, eight or fewer or more than eight, does it really matter?
There used to be state law about restrictions on eight or fewer for both group homes and now Billings got into a real thing with it years ago, because they tried to deny a group home, but the state stepped in. It said, if it's fewer than eight people, you can't. Now, Billings got into a real thing with it years ago because they tried to deny a group home that the state stepped in and said if it's fewer than eight people, you can't.
They have group home also in a separate space here.
What's the difference between a group home and daycare? I understand assisted living.
Yeah, group care, yeah, that's what I thought, Sandy.
Daycare, I think, is a daily operation versus a live-in operation, like.
Some communities have senior drop-in places too, so.
Yeah, but again, they also get picked up at the end of the day.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
Yeah.
But the group home, I guess, a gr- what's an example of a group home that isn't assisted living?
Well, we have the group home, uh, again, I'm not sh- I don't think I know enough on the topic, but we have the two group homes here in town. And I don't, I think they had a caretaker that would come by, but I don't think they lived on site.
Yeah, assisted living, I think you have to have nursing staff on.
That, that seems right to me, where it's just a elevated level of care.
Correct. Where a group home is, could be disabled, disabled people who don't need, um, you know, nursing care or assistance. It's just a more, it's more of a supervision type scenario than anything. John, you're, you're right, but it could also be a group home for, um, people recovering from addictions.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of different group, types of group homes out there.
But, yeah, supervision seems very accurate, yeah, that's.
That's the supervision piece I was talking about.
Yep, that makes perfect sense.
So, assisted living does not include a nursing home or long care, long-term care facility. So that's one of the definitions we have in here. And group home, uh, just has residents that provides non-institutional housing. For persons living as a single housekeeping unit.
Assist.
A, a group of no more than eight persons with developmental disabilities living in a state licensed group home or community residential home. A group of not more than eight persons with a mental illness living in a state licensed group home. Or a group of not more than eight persons, sixty years of age or older who do not need nursing facilities.
That's the group home. That, that's not what she said?
It's such a thin line between a group home and assisted living.
Well, I think, I think one was, that's assisted is there's somebody in, living in the facility, whereas a group home is just a group home. With a group of.
Individuals that need supervision. So, looking at assisted living's definition, and again, just good old internet, uh. Provides community-based housing meals and supports for older adults and people with disabilities who need some help with daily activities, but not constant medical care of a nursing home. Um, so I think of that as you have someone there doing more of essentially assisting with the living, which makes sense, making the meals, helping them bathe. All of those pieces where a group home, they might be able to make their own meals, do their own snacks, those types of pieces, but you still need that supervision there. And this one also is very specific around medical, um, just not constant medical like a nursing home, where you have onsite nurses and.
So there is, there is an MTA, um, but I think, do you remember if they got updates or if Brian was having someish, some issues with, uh. Potentially some here in town, that's just questions being asked, but state law does have limits on the eight person, um. For certain definitions and residential, so I think your zoning is based off of this MTA right now.
So leave it to less than eight and more than eight?
Mm-hmm, because, yeah, it looks like there's a, the state has a, a cutoff of less than or equal to eight and it's dependent on state licensing and. Um, whether or not you can do conditional use or allow use, so. I think, I think how you have it now is in compliance, as far as it being allowed in all residential districts for less than eight.
And then conditional for more than eight?
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have those one after the other instead of down the list.
What'd you say, Sandy?
Um, it looks like it's conditional for more than eight in, uh, all the R zones. And for less than eight, it's permitted in all the R zones.
That's for assisted living, right, yeah?
Yeah, both of the assisted living.
And the.
It'd be nice to have one after the other so that, just a little quicker to, to see them.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest maybe, or when we get to the end, of, of either trying to group them so they're kind of like things or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or, or do, um, alphabetical.
Okay, yeah, I knew that one. Just now for Greg, so.
Any other questions about group homes or assisted living facilities? Any, we're okay with keeping things pretty much the way they are?
Yeah, I don't see a problem. I thought about in the C three north and south. But maybe it's better to leave it in a residential neighborhood.
Leave.
Either of the assisted living. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
Yeah, I don't mind it being in the residential space, um, that being said, like, I also don't, but it, I feel like that is a more. Residential in nature type of use, less commercial, like they're living there, it's home, less of a medical office. But I also don't necessarily mind it being conditional across the board, like. If you wanted to set the willows up as a group home.
You've got three million dollars.
I mean, it'd be a really nice group.
Well, I mean, but, yeah, it's probably going to be a group home or assisted living, one or the other, because that's what it was designed and built for, so.
That's C three north.
I agree with Chelsea.
Go ahead, you can.
Board, I think, I agree with Chelsea, I think it should go across the board. Because it is a commercial, you, and assisted living is, is, you know, it's commercial too, I mean, it's a business.
Do we make it larger than eight and leave the less than eight in residential?
That sounds reasonable. So, we're talking about fewer than eight right now, right? Are we talking about greater than eight?
I think we're talking about all of it.
Yeah, I mean, greater than eight, um, I think, since we already have the willows out by the hospital and that's.
Yeah, I'd say greater than eight can be anywhere throughout town. And then less than eight in some of those smaller residential areas, because, I mean, the Sunrise House is a good example of that, that would have been, that slept. I mean, if each person had their own room, I should know this.
I don't remember.
One, two, three, four.
It's at least eight rooms.
Five, six, seven, seven bedrooms.
But then you have the, the.
That includes the downstairs, there's only one bedroom on the main floor.
Yeah.
But, yes, I mean, that tracks, and that's a big house, so, I mean, I can't imagine many others that would have eight bedrooms in downtown.
Yeah, so, so what I'm hearing is for assisted living, greater than eight persons to make a conditional across the board, both residential and commercial districts, is.
And for less, just allow it anywhere they want.
Sue, you have any thoughts?
Well, in general, when you do it, think of it mentally as an application here or there, um. In the neighborhoods, I think just from the observation in my neighborhood, um, the folks that live there. Are recognized by their neighbors and they tend to fit right in. And if you had a, a larger group, that might not be quite as secure, I guess. It's kind of like neighbors take care of neighbors and it works. Not like knocking on doors, but like, if, if you see, if you see somebody every day go by, you, you wave at them and then you see them go by and they don't look like they feel well that day. You know, it, it works to have people who live around and you have the mixed, the mixed neighborhood in a way. And it's, it works pretty well, but then I can see when you get into the larger numbers, it would make it a little more complicated.
Yeah, I, no, I agree, um, I also think with, you know, large, more than eight persons, uh. Having them in, you know, R one through R four, you're going to have parking issues, uh.
It, it, most of those aren't going to be driving.
Well, they, yeah, but there's family and, and.
Maybe, I mean.
I think it fits more, better, I guess, I'm just saying, I think it fits better in commercial than it does in residential for the, for more than eight.
Well, we've got it as conditional use right now in, in the residential.
I know it, none in commercial.
And none in commercial, so I think what we're talking about is you're making it conditional across the board. If a proposal came, was made to do an assisted living facility within one of the residential areas, then it would have to come before the.
Then we have to approve it, yeah.
In what.
He would address partying and, yeah, that, that makes sense.
Okay, so are we agreed to, uh, larger than eight to be conditional all the way through the Cs?
I, I'm hearing that, I heard that from John, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then Sue Perry, yep. Did you get that, Greg?
Yeah.
And then I would just say for less than eight, we have it permitted R one through R four, but I'd also say conditional through C one through C four.
I don't have a problem with that, too.
Yeah, I mean, they want to have really nice rooms, wouldn't have any nice rooms. No, don't force them to have nine.
I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Uh, the, there's, the only potential problem with that is in our. Oh, it's, no, oh, that.
I'm talking.
Excuse me.
Okay.
We're talking about less than eight.
Yeah.
Making it permitted in the R zones and conditional in the commercial zone. Okay.
Yes.
That sound okay? All right. Anything else?
Uh, next is public parks and recreation, which is permitted in all districts.
What's that?
Public parks and recreation.
Definition remark, rec- recreation. How broad could that definition be?
What's our definition currently say? Or do we have one?
We have recreation broken down, recreation facility indoor, recreation facility outdoor, recreational vehicle storage yard. Recreational vehicle park, RV park.
Do we have one specifically for public parks and recreation?
No.
No?
No.
So that might just be something we want to add.
There's a lot of recreational vehicle, there's three of those. And then the indoor and outdoor recreation facility.
Isn't this really addressing facilities or not?
I agree.
I think it's, I think that's the intent, it's.
It was never, yeah.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be permitting that in, across the board.
Yeah, I have no issue with, I mean, it permitted.
It might be, it might behoove us, under the definitions, when we get into recreational facility indoor and outdoor, that it excludes RV, RV, recreational vehicle. You know, be really clear with that.
I think you just.
Or define it as recreation facilities.
There, yep.
And not, and get rid of all the rest of that or, or not, or we can have the rest in our definitions, but.
Yeah, and.
It's completely enclosed, like an indoor one, there's an indoor one, like an indoor roller skating rink or billiards or gym or pool, theater, sewing pool.
It could even be an exterior one.
Outdoor.
But, I guess, on our map, all our, our P one and the P two, um.
As a.
Those are all blue, but those, those, to me, that, it goes to the city property.
Correct.
And, and maybe, I don't know, maybe we'd say public, um, public use, parks and recreation.
Okay.
Which kind of separates it from, you know, public versus private.
Yeah.
A recreational facility outdoor in our definition includes firing range.
Yeah.
An outdoor firing range, yeah.
But that's C three.
That'd be great in one of our residential.
Wouldn't that be really nice?
Keep it in there.
Where shall we, where shall we put that?
You could put it in the field right next to my house.
Up by my, up by my high school.
Honestly, it would be really, it actually would make sense as a field by my house.
So.
I think we need to just clean up.
That public parks and recreation is a little scary, you know?
I, I'm assuming what was intended there is basically public parks, you know, like.
Sure is.
Period, like coal miners or Finn Park or, you know, and.
Or the skate, skate park and, yeah.
Well, why don't we just do two separate things, public parks and then recreational facilities?
Indoor and outdoor.
Yeah, recreational facilities can include both, but.
Or we can have.
Yeah, I don't think we need to have two different lines, we could just have recreational facilities.
And call it all conditional.
Maybe, or some of it permitted, I don't necessarily mind having recreational facilities in permitted spaces, I don't think it has to be conditional.
Yeah, let's see, well, the city.
And firing range on the inside too.
Well, again, what I'm saying is.
Inside firing range.
We can work on our definitions for sure, but at the same time, I would say that we could probably permit, you know, things like the gym going up in a commercial space.
Right, for the bowling alley if, when it, when or if it moves.
Yeah. Got it.
Off of public land.
Well, I think, I think it probably should be, yeah, because we don't, I mean, you wouldn't want a facility within the residential, a commercial facility within a residential area.
No, no.
So I think, that's what I'm saying, is we probably need to break out.
All the R's.
Parks.
We want parks that are reverbant, not the other.
So should we strike out, so where it says public parks and recreation, just leave it as public parks?
Yes. And then have a line for recreational facilities and then per the conversation have it conditional use through all the Rs and C one and then permitted through the C, other Cs, how's that sound?
Well, I wouldn't have conditional use for facilities in the Rs.
Uh, isn't that what I said, or did I mean it the other way around?
I thought, I thought you had said conditional use in the Rs.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, I don't think we want to go there, but anybody else have any thoughts? I mean, you're dealing, then you're dealing with.
I just don't see the light face to be.
I mean.
We have a swimming pool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the R zone.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, you have swimming pools, someone might want to put in a, a yoga facility, like, again, it depends on what that piece is, I think conditional makes sense. To where if you can, and I understand that we kind of have our hands tied to a degree with conditional use, but if you have a facility that is matching the aesthetic, again, look at the Boys and Girls Club. I think a lot of folks would actually really like to have recreational facilities within close distance of their home.
Could we change, instead of public parks and recreation, call it city parks and recreation?
Well, I think, again, just two separate line items, one, public parks, which is.
Right.
And then one's recreational facilities.
Recreation facilities, yeah, that works too.
Does that have to be said again?
Do you have any thoughts, Greg?
Yeah, I don't want to see any other.
Yeah, I made a.
That one would be completely.
I made a second line for recreational facilities, um.
You had those.
I didn't quite catch how you wanted to handle the recreational, but.
Helping.
That might be dependent on the definition, um, so I do have a note for those two lines, create a definition. Maybe that's one to circle back to once we have an agreed upon definition.
I'm good with that.
Especially the shooting range part.
I'm good with that, yeah, that makes sense. We've got a whole separate line item just for shooting range and it can just be in my neighbor's yard.
Well, that's true.
I'll, I'll agree with that, yeah.
Even if, but Chelsea, even if it was shooting range and it was indoors, that has a lot of different impact than an, than an outdoor, just.
Okay.
Yeah, way different, yeah, so.
And again, they're going to have a lot more regulations too, depending on, across the board, so.
Is that one of us helping?
Yeah, we don't need to try and tell them how to do a shooting range, I think, I think we'll, I think the government beyond us will do that for us.
One would hope. Okay, so we. Okay, so we changed public parks and recreation to public parks, and it's permitted across the board, and then we'll have the new recreational facilities that will circle back and take a look at whether or not we wanna make it conditional across the board, or make it out of recreational, uh, out of the residential area.
Greg.
Good.
Got daycare and group care together.
Next is daycare, group care, and the, so daycare, group care, group home, Jeremy and I will check the MCA's, just to make sure what gets recommended tonight, 'cause there is, the state might break up youth, youth group homes and youth group care versus adult group, group care, so we might have to add a few more lines. And the ones I see with this is they might be required to be permitted in all residential, just as a forewarning for that discussion. But if there were changes, we could still discuss them and...
Circle back.
There's a lot of that in this.
Of course.
Um, but I didn't know if anyone wanted to change any of these to permitted off the bat, or change them to conditional at all, or just keep them...
I have no issue with them being permitted across the board.
Okay.
And the only argument that I would say to maybe change that would be specifically for parking, drop off, that kind of thing, is because ju, I know that specifically with daycares, uh, like, for instance, Fair Tooth Children's Center, there's a lot of staffing that they have to have. I think it's one, one teacher, or supervisor, whatever you wanna call that, to every six kids, depending on their age, and if they're under one or two, that's even more. So, you might have some parking restrictions there, so that would really be my only hesitation for making it permitted, but otherwise, I also see it as a need within the community as well, so kinda wanna allow for that wherever possible.
But we already have an issue with, um, it, it's, it's in a residential zone, in both the Boys and Girls Club and the daycare. I mean, they've got that little, little green guy that says slow down, that gets run over all the time, run over all the time. Uh, Public Health and Safety's had the discussion about even closing that off, except for pickup and drop off, which causes other trickle-down problems, but, um, I'm not sure that it's as simple as parking, I think it's also the pickup and drop off.
That's what I'm saying, is like, how are those kids getting picked up and dropped off to the park, you know, the parents do park. Um, but, yeah, I think the problem we have there is less of a, the facilities issue, more of the, the, the right-of-way issue, the driving, but, just something to keep in mind, I just know that in terms of staffing those, it's extensive, so it might be worth having. And again, we have this broken down with, so each of these categories, just remind me, correct me if I'm wrong, they all have their own chapter, essentially, to where we break down the rules for each of these different setups. So, like, group home has its own set of rules, worship facility has its own set of rules, but that's okay, I have no issue making it permitted, as long as there's rules that do address some of those concerns.
I was thinking about making them, I see them conditional in the R zones, but I would probably extend that to conditional all across the board, because there's a lot of things to be considered.
Well, again, I don't think we necessarily need to make it conditional, I think that there are conditions that we have within our zoning of rules they have to follow.
But we don't.
And that's what I'm saying, why don't we do that? Instead of making it conditional and making a whole process where they have to come in, make it permitted, but set those priorities out the gate, to where it's like, you do need to have enough parking adequate for your staffing off-street, you do need to have, um, I don't know what other rules might be there, but...
State license.
State license, like those types of things, to where...
Make the zoning about twice as thick as it already is, if we do that one.
So, here's, here's another thing to consider, is if it goes through conditional use, there's public notice, neighbors get to come in and comment and, and make their feelings known, so I think that's something else to sort of keep in mind, or why, why we would, may wanna keep it as conditional use in the residential zones, so that there's an opportunity for the neighbors to look at what's being proposed, otherwise, they'll never see it till construction starts, if it's permitted.
Yeah, it doesn't come in front of us, we don't discuss anything about it, they just start building.
Yeah.
And I see in this list, it, we have it conditional in the C1, so we have it in all of the residential and the C1 as conditional. I, I don't see a disadvantage to making it conditional in the commercial zone, although there won't be as many restrictions in a commercial zone as there would be in a residential zone.
Yeah, I don't disagree, I mean, we're also, I don't disagree, but we're also talking about, you know, let's not get confused, we have existing use already, we're talking about future use, yeah. If I'm trying to see all the way across.
Oh, even where it's currently says permitted in the commercial zones.
That way we could regulate parking, um, what it looks like from the street, especially in our commercial zone.
Sue, you have any thoughts?
I love the question. Um, I keep trying to picture in my mind, with parking being like parking is here, you have, um, it's a double-edged sword, sometimes it's good to have parking, and sometimes it's bad to have parking. So, the more flexibility we have in there, I think the better off we'll be, because we don't wanna create a situation inadvertent, to where people couldn't get to a particular place because this other place is so popular that it's taking up everything on the street. So, if we left it conditional, I think we might be able to use a little more judgment in this.
So, you're saying conditional all the way across, or just in the residential?
Well, for sure, at least in the residential.
Okay. John?
I agree with you, we, that, the conditional gives us out, it gives us more options, it does, I agree with the conditions all the way across.
Okay, so I got one, two, three.
I still think that I'd rather see criteria set and fewer conditional uses, kind of backtracking again to the conversations we had the previous meeting, where the fewer conditional uses, the more likely we are to be able to have daycares getting developed within our area, because it's a, it's hard to invest and to land all the development on something that's a maybe. So, I say no.
Okay. I think we've got consensus for conditional use all the way across for daycare group, it's the daycare group care that we're talking about, right?
Yep, and that's one Jeremy and I will check if we need to, that's one we'll check if we need to split it up at all, or do anything different, so...
All right, worship facilities? Any comments on that?
I'm kinda surprised that we have it in the R1, because those are larger lots traditionally, that might be a good place for a worship facility. Obviously, on a sixty-two, fifty-square-foot lot, it needs to definitely be conditional, because it would be a very small worship facility, and the parking could be an issue in a residential zone. And I see we have it all the way through C2, and then permitted, obviously, in the, in the commercials, north, south, and four. I like the permitted, I'm, but I'm kind of waffling on the R1.
Making that permitted. I think a big part of R1, too, isn't necessarily just space, but also quiet and peace, and not having large groups cluster into that space, or church bells on a Sunday when you wanna sleep in.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's, there's another issue in town right now, where the Regis is, you know, they, they'd love to sell it, but they can't get a liquor license, you know, the future buyer couldn't get a liquor license, 'cause they're across the street from the school.
Yeah.
So, and then, and there's also restrictions, if there's a church, on certain business locations, and so, you know, you...
Well, to give you an idea, the R1 zone...
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, I don't think R1's a bad, bad area, but, I mean, we have other areas that, I don't, I mean, right now, I mean, C4, we have existing use, and I think that's why they've, it falls in C4, is 'cause we have a couple of churches that fall in those areas, but like, there's one on Sixteenth, which is where Messiah Lutheran used to be, they're not there anymore, and do we, would we want another church going back there? Or do we, is that a, a map adjustment we need, we need to make, you know, as we're considering this?
Well, we were advised against doing spot zoning.
Well, that's, that is spot zone, you know, so that, it was to accommodate an existing use, and I think that, that there are, existing use is grandfathered in, I think spot zoning is a bad idea.
Well, now that it's not used that way anymore, it's...
Right.
Well, and it's still zoned for R2, so...
No, it's C4, it's on Sixteenth.
Oh, I'm looking at the one that used to be on Nineteenth, sorry, apologies.
No, no, that's, I just happened to catch that one, and, um...
The one that was on Adams and Nineteenth, that used to be Messiah Lutheran?
Was it Nineteenth?
Mm-hmm. It don't now.
Yeah, what's the, what's the other one, the C4, then there, oh, that's, never mind, that is Regis.
So, what was you, like, you were talking about R1, changing that to...
Too permitted, is what I was, I was contemplating. And yes, there, there are, there, it's mostly hillside, we'll start with that. It's not a terrible place for a church.
Well, I think, going back to earlier rationale, having a, conditional requires public hearing, and if, if somebody hears a church is going in next door, they're, they're gonna wanna have their say about it, just because on a Sunday, there's gonna be a whole bunch of people there, and...
Parking. Parking, parking. But we have, has permitted in C4.
I just think it's worth pointing out that you guys do have the standards of general applicability to all development for off-street parking, so, like, worship facilities require one parking spot for every five seats, so, the development has to comply with zoning, so Brian or...
So, even if it's permitted, it still has to comply, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
So, we would still have to check to make sure they're giving enough spots for all these uses.
I think probably a key, for me, a key consideration there is just the public notice, letting the neighbors know that, that the proposed use is an opportunity to comment.
Um, thinking of the situation in another place where I live, where the whole town got really upset about, um, um, what do you call it, a convenience store being in an area, and there was a church not far from that, and they wanted to just kinda blow everything up to where, um, you couldn't sell, not, not beer, you couldn't sell Coca-Cola, Pepsi, or anything there, because it would interfere with the church, and I think for a lot better than that.
And they're asking, allow caffeine?
Yeah, I think for a lot more reason.
True story.
John, do you have any thoughts? We're talking about changing worship facilities in R1 from a C to a P, or permitted?
I, I agree with the C, keep it.
Keep it conditional?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say, yeah, just because it is nice to let the neighbors have a say in it.
Chelsea?
I'm gonna go with no again, and specifically, just, I, again, we have places in our zoning that allows for certain things, and, and create some of those rules, and as much as I don't necessarily wanna have a church going next to my house, I believe that someone should be able to do what they wanna do next door.
So, you're okay with a firing range and a church?
And a church, and a fire department.
Just checking.
So, I think consensus is we leave condition, leave it as it is, if there was any changing on the permitted uses for, on any of the other zones, was there?
No.
And it's permitted in, uh, B3 and South and C4, right?
North, South, and Four.
Okay. Group home, we talked about that, didn't we?
I have no idea. Yeah, I think we're coming back to that.
There's group care, and then there's group home.
So, I think that's a state definition, and that's the reason there's two.
Okay.
I think it's just another one to check, and it's...
All right.
Probably...
And bed and breakfast is conditional for residence, residential zones, and permitted for all the commercial zones.
I think that's fine.
Any, any comment? Perry?
I, I, I'm gonna go back to the, I think it should be permitted throughout, but that's just me. Um, again, I don't see much of a difference in having family and friends spend the weekend with you versus people you don't know all that well, but staying in a place and making a muffin. I just personally, bed breakfasts creep me out, but that doesn't mean I shouldn't have them next door.
I bet you.
Especially if you come back to, you know, have parking restrictions or something, don't...
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, and that's exactly, if it's already down below, like, I don't see a reason not to permit it, just have the rules that you want within your zoning, and allow people to be able to make decisions moving forward, whether that's the neighbors when they buy, to know that this is a potential that's gonna be happening next door, versus someone who wants to purchase land and potentially put a professional office. That, that's, that's where my head lags, is create the rules within the zoning.
John, do you have any thoughts? Bed and breakfast?
No, no, this is just, I mean, this is where it gets to, you know, definitions, to, right, to whether it's a conditional use or not. I mean, that's, that's, at the end of the day, that's kinda where we're, but that's where I'm struggling a little bit.
Between having conditional use...
I mean, having conditional, conditional use, to where then it comes to us, and we've gotta deal with it, right? I mean, that's the, to where if it's, it's in the definitions, it's a pretty cut and dry, and here's your permit. So, it's, you know, how much involvement do we want from a planning board, you know, to then have public comment and everything? I mean, and it's on all of this, it's not just this one, that's where I'm struggling, and I guess is what I'm saying more than Jeff. It's like, well, how do you balance that, right? Um, and not create more issues for the planning board and the city council?
Yeah.
Good point.
That's kinda what my head is.
Here's, here's my thing, too, is what if in the R2 zone, which is the high bug, they wanna change one of those beautiful homes into a bed and breakfast? Do you think that we would have everybody else who lives in the high bug in here?
I'd be in there, but in support.
Well, if we make it permitted, they don't even know it's going in.
Again, you don't necessarily need to have your neighbors up in your business. If you wanna be that good neighbor and have them in your business, you can go talk to them.
Unless it affects your neighbors.
Well, and that's the thing, that's part of the rules, is as long as you are acting as a good neighbor in good faith, and that's what the zoning code should be in favor of, if that's what the zoning code should be, is creating regulation to make it to where these operations aren't necessarily going to have that negative impact on your neighbors. It doesn't mean, again, I can do what I want between the walls of my house, as long as I'm not pissing off the folks across the street.
Yeah, well, Chelsea, I don't know if we have very many here in town, but a lot of communities, they've changed their rules on Airbnb, that you can, like, in the high bug, you can, you can rent out rooms, and, gosh, you're gonna serve them a snack, or a meal, or something along with that, how's that not a bed and breakfast?
Yeah, we just serve them.
And then, especially in, in R1, I mean, those are huge lots, and, and if somebody wanted to turn that into a bed and breakfast, who cares?
Right, thank you, yeah.
And if they're, you know, their neighbors are gonna, maybe they're gonna be upset, but like I say, they could, they could still have it be an Airbnb. Same issues, you know, you still got the same number of people, you know?
Well, again, there could be someone in my neighborhood that just watches all the Well, again, there could be someone in my neighborhood that just watches all the neighborhood kids, but they might as well make a buck off of it and do a daycare. Like, and I'd much rather have a bed and breakfast next to me than a daycare personally.
That should drop off in pickup type.
Yeah, right, and so, again, that's, that's where I feel like instead of creating a bunch of conditional uses and things for people to get up in arms about, having rules set in place that make it to where people are being forced to be good neighbors in a degree and it takes away a lot of the question of what you're doing after, right?
And I have no problem with bed and breakfast being permitted in R one and R four, but I still would prefer to leave it conditional in R two and R three.
So, I got a question. So, we've all talked about the conditional use. No one's ever, you know, we've always given them, right? Hundred percent, there's no failure rate. So.
Oh, yeah.
Wouldn't it move us, though, to have permits and have the language sitting inside the permitted side of it rather than the conditional use side? I'm just asking the question because I just don't know. And I'm not trying to spark an argument, but I just don't, from a logic perspective, that's where it comes into play to where maybe we should be doing more permit descriptions and, you know, kind of cut out more of this conditional use because quite frankly, it's gonna happen no matter what if you're in a conditional use anyway and you're gonna get a permit.
Greg, do you have any thoughts on?
So, with what John's saying, like, that's correct on conditional uses, like you can beef up your regulations to be very cut and dry, this is what you need to do. And that's why when they come here, they're getting approved because it's a vetted use. You're okay with it, you just might need to put on conditions such as operating hours or whatever to protect public health and safety. So, if you write your regs to kind of foresee that, then that addresses what you might add as a condition. Um, as far as bed and breakfast, do you have specific uses for that right now? So, it's a maximum of five guest units and the operator has to live on site. So, and then everything else is sort of written like short-term rentals, basically, which is probably worth noting, short-term rentals are allowed. We have those marked everywhere. So.
So, the difference between a short-term rental and bed and breakfast?
And the fact that someone's living on site, that's a big part of it, which I think it's one more reason I say allow it everywhere. Like, you have someone who's living there, well, I was gonna say year-round full-time, but I know that Irish Rose does not live there year-round full-time, but.
They also don't rent.
No, they're not open when they're out there.
Exactly. So, again, I don't see any reason why not to have a bed and breakfast and permitted throughout. I just, again, having those regulations written how you want it to be operated and then save the headache for the planning board for one and then two, also make it a little bit more accessible for folks coming in if that's their intent. Because, you know, it's a lot when you're, like, for instance, again, buying a commercial lot here in town, it's a big investment and going into it, reviewing those zoning codes extremely thoroughly, trying to make sure that what we wanna do is right. Otherwise, you know, we're paying interest, we're paying debt, like, we're, it's a lot for someone to do, especially if we're trying to support smaller businesses or smaller ventures. They might not have the capital to come in, be able to really, it opens the door a little bit in a safe way. Opens the door with a welcome mat where we want you to wipe your shoes.
Can I just, I wanna ask a question and again, this is, I'm gonna go back to, I don't know enough not to ask the question. How's that? So, can we ask the city council for some guidance on what they would like us to do? What, I mean, in this type of scenario, whether we do conditional use or permitted and go down the, you know, the rabbit hole with, you know, the permits and really getting into detail and descriptions? I, I mean, I'm not, and I don't know if that's procedure or anything like that because I know we give recommendations to the city council, but I just, just from a guidance, you know, a high-level perspective, is that something we, I mean, I, and again, I'm gonna say I'm out in left field, so, but it's just a question that came in my head with this. Just to get some clarification on what, you know, what direction do we worry about permits or conditional use? And then, you know, sorry, sorry if I opened the door, I shouldn't.
Well, I think in the past, you know, the city councils given direction to the planning board to come up with the recommendations and then pass those on to the city council for their review and approval. So, I think what I would say is, one of the things we probably ought to take a look at is our growth policy and what the growth policy says about residential neighborhoods. I think, I think we, um, so that we're consistent. Um, and I know one of the things that, that's in the growth policy is protecting the residential character of the neighborhoods. So, you know, I, I guess kind of where I come from is being living in a residential area in R three, if somebody wanted to have a bread and breakfast next door to me, I'd kind of wanna know about it. I wouldn't wanna wake up one morning and see a bread and breakfast next to me and then dealing with the parking that's associated with it, so.
Bart wouldn't do that to you.
With that?
Bart wouldn't do that to you.
I think parking is probably addressed for bed and breakfast. So, we've addressed, on bed and breakfast, we've addressed parking, we've addressed signage, we've addressed the maximum occupancy, and we've addressed that the owner has to be present.
And there's residential historic characters have to be compatible with the bulk scale and appearance of the neighborhood which is located. So, they have to maintain the appearance of the home essentially.
So, I kind of have flip-flopped to permitted in the R zones because there's quite a few, I mean, we've dealt with the parking. We, we're not worried about the noise level because that's dealt with.
Yeah, people that say that bed and breakfast, I don't think actually talk.
I'm okay with making it permitted all across the board.
Carrie?
I'm permitting across the board.
What's that?
I'm permitting across the board.
I'm okay with that, but I, there are other things that just, you know, get covered in this kind of thing, like the people that run their yard sales from their backyard perpetually.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that kind of thing.
It's not a bed and breakfast, this year.
Yeah. Again, there's, I think, one of the big things that, going back to it, is we wanna have good neighbors and unfortunately zoning can't define who the person is. But we can at least help put some rules in place to make sure that that, because you can come in here with the best of intentions and things written down on paper, but when you put it into that zoning code and make it law, that makes it a little bit easier to enforce. And, yeah, again, you can't, can't pick your neighbors, but you can build a fence.
So, I'm gonna sort of recommend when we get to the discussion about in the zoning, on the criteria, maybe then come back and revisit this one.
Yep, yeah, okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay. Long-term care facility, we talked about that, right?
Kind of. I feel like it gets kind of grouped in with assisted living and group homes. Is this something that MCA has a definition for as well?
I see, especially the assisted, or, I'm sorry, the long-term care. I guess in assisted living, greater than eight persons, I see both of those as commercial applications. I don't see them as residential. Because they have to have, you have to have a commercial kitchen, you've gotta, you know.
Nurses, all that.
Yeah.
I think, wasn't there a MCA code dealing with having to allow assisted living facilities within residential areas? And that's why we have it as conditional use?
I think it's eight persons, again.
But is it eight?
What I've seen, just on a quick search of MCA.
Oh, is that great?
On a quick search of MCA, it looks like there's, there's state statutes on long-term care facilities of its own definition, so, that'll, we'll lump that one in and make sure we get that one.
Okay.
No, I've just been kind of curious on assisted living for greater than eight. We, we only have conditional under residential, we have nothing under commercial, so. I think coming back to the willows, which that is, that was an assisted living facility.
Yeah, it, it's, I'm kind of wondering why we don't have it as permitted and commercial.
Yeah.
But long-term, we do.
Yeah, I think they're talking about assisted living again.
Assisted living greater than eight.
Greater than eight persons.
That definitely makes more sense, and I think we had talked about that too. Sure, he was gonna switch that to permitted, but again, I think we're also waiting for the state MCA and what the rules are for that. But I have no issue with that being permitted there.
So, the reference would be to the one I have highlighted, change those four to permitted and commercial for greater than eight?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, now it looks like we're getting into more of the odds and ends ones.
Perfect.
Wireless communications.
We only have one here in town up on the hill, which is why we have that.
In R one, in R one?
It's currently in R one.
Yeah, that's the best location, actually, so.
Yeah, I don't see us putting it all over the rims of Red Lodge. Nobody would need it.
Put one in the spires. I like it. Put one in the spires, right there on the end of the hill.
Great view.
I think keeping it conditional makes sense.
Somebody else wants to put another antenna up there or something.
Yeah.
In the R one.
What is, I mean, I do think of, like, the spires and. What's R four back there? R three? Yeah, that'd be the only other place I could see someone wanting to do it or maybe even, because that is up on a hill, but again, I'm not hoping that they do, but.
It'd be over the hospital?
Mm-hmm. Again, not hoping they do, I'm just saying that would be a place that would make sense for it, but.
You sure don't want it there.
No.
Yeah, it's R three too, if it's eight spires.
Yeah, so, I guess.
So, the definition in zoning is for commercial use only? So, MCA does have rules on residential antennas and communications where the city has to allow it.
What's that?
The city has to allow amateur radio antennas.
Which have radios, yeah.
So, the city can.
But that's different, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, this one would be more of a commercial restriction.
Yeah, I don't see changing what we have there.
I don't have any issue with it.
I think, again, the only reason why it's in R one is because of the.
Already there.
That they're already there. Although a lot of that's outside the city, isn't it?
Yeah, I'd say, up top, isn't it?
It is, it's up here.
Yeah.
So, it's actually in the county?
Yeah, it's in the county.
I always found it weird that this was even in our.
Well, this actually is supposed to be the city limit.
Oh, okay.
So, this section is unzoned.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the hill's not in R one, but the hill top.
But if it were to get zoned, likely it would become R one, so.
Probably.
And that's the other thing too, annexation, just keeping that in mind, but.
All right. Animals?
Can we define animals back there? Livestocks, raccoons, chickens, what we got?
We have definitions for exotic animals, hoofed domestic animals, household pet animal, animal non-domestic.
Because right now, I'm seeing it as conditional use and I don't think we're getting a lot of folks coming in for conditional use for pets.
Well, exotic is, that goes back to Jeannie Rosoto and her.
Look, the chimp.
And her chimp and bee is an exotic animal.
Oh, we have the wildlife sanctuary. Do we have them zoned here?
And we have a lot, and we've also dealt with the hoofed domestic.
Yeah, I know about the pigs.
So, the reason we got extensive with this is because of the.
Horses.
Horses down here on Fifth and.
Hagan.
That's your dog.
Yeah, yeah, they're no longer there. But we still have horses up on the hill. I've lived at both neighbors, neighboring houses to both horse pastures in town.
Oh, I just like the smell.
I don't mind it, like, it reminds me of home.
And then also, McKay's bring their horses in during the summer.
They do, on their land by the bench.
That's why we have it as conditional use in the zones that we have it.
Yes. I'm just more so saying, should we maybe say non-domestic animals? Or are we just leaving it at animals and then we can read that section? Because I'm okay with that, just as long as that's clear.
We could say excluding household.
It might be, yeah.
Household pets.
Yeah, household pets. Or if it's defined, I'm fine with that. We don't need to get too deep on that.
It's defined in specific uses as hoofed animals.
Okay, we'll get down into.
We have hoofed domestic and then we have household pets.
The chimp was considered a household pet. The chimp was a household pet.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it might.
But they're exotic.
Yeah.
It might, might be worth just adding it as hoofed animals rather than just animals generic, right?
And within that definition, does it bring up ESA and service animals, ESA? Because technically, you can have them.
They're protected status.
Yep, so you can have a miniature pony.
Yeah.
That's protected.
Yeah.
Which is wild.
I know. They can go on airplanes.
They can go on airplanes. I'm really looking forward to the day where I get a ride next to a pony.
Apparently, it'll probably happen to you. So, if we did animals that are hoofed domestic, and then that would coincide with our definition of cattle, horses and mules.
Okay. Yeah, just be nice of that.
Yes. All right. Anybody else have any comments on that? John? Pete's forgetting about you.
It's all good. No, I don't have any comments.
I'll just get a computer monitor and put it right there so you can see his face.
And we have really strong requirements for hoofed domestic animals and what you have to do to have them in a residential zone.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
So, they're all conditional uses and then we've also got it in C three north and south.
Yep, yeah, it's just mostly making sure it's clearly defined and that I'm not gonna have to fill out a permit for my dogs.
This is your stuff in city code? Yeah, I figured.
Um, professional office, sorry. Uh, I, the only thing with professional office, and again, I imagine that's clearly defined, and I would just say we should probably be sure we're really clear with that just because there's so many people that do work from home now. And, but again, I do think that's pretty clearly defined if I remember correctly.
Nope, we don't have a definition for professional office. But it would seem to me that it would be professional or medical. I don't see the difference.
What's that?
I would assume that a professional office and a medical office?
Maybe just have professional slash medical.
Well, I think.
Move it to one line.
I think there's a.
They're the same restriction.
Okay, we have office comma professional. A place of business for predominantly administrative, professional or clerical operations, for instance, accountant, architect, attorney, bookkeeper, broker, doctor, dentist, chiropractor, psychologist, drafter, I don't know what a drafter is. The people that writes too close on your tail. Bank, savings and loan, insurance company, credit union, credit reporting agency, developer, contractor, engineer, surveyor, planner, insurance agency, interior design, landscape architect, pharmacy, notary, dentographer, clerical services. Okay, um, bank, savings and loan, insurance company, credit union, credit reporting agency, developer, contractor, engineer, surveyor, planner, insurance agency, interior design, landscape architect, pharmacy, notary, dentographer, clerical services.
Yeah, I don't think we necessarily need to have...
Medical.
All those examples. I do find it funny that dentist is underneath professional and medic- not underneath medical.
Well, doctor is under, doctor and dentist is under office comma professional.
Yeah.
So, we don't really need medical office because it is included in our definition for professional office.
I, I think the reason why we have it separated is because we were thinking more along the lines of a professional person that's working either in their residence or within, where you wouldn't have high traffic volumes, so along the lines of an accountant or... Whereas with a medical office, you generally gonna have higher traffic volumes and parking...
And more than one person at the office at one time, yeah.
Parking needs and those kind of, I think that's why we have it separated out.
And I could also see it just materials use too.
We have the use as identical too.
Right.
Yeah, I would just say, so, kinda to go back to where we were, having, and I know that it might add some pages, but we also did just remove a bunch of pages, so we have some room, right? Having, for any of these specific uses, having some, a section for those specific uses underneath to where...
Professional office.
Yeah, so professional, all of it, really, so like, we talk about recreational facilities, like, each one has not just a definition, but its own little category. It can be very brief, it could be as thorough as we need it to be, but it's clearly defined within that specific use table. And, does that make sense? Okay.
Well, I think that...
Just wanna make sure that makes sense.
A professional office, whether it's medical, or a contractor, or an insurance agency, I still think those need to be conditional uses in R2, 3, and 4. But I do think that the professional op- we can do away with medical, since the definition for professional includes medical.
Yeah, with...
Any, any other thoughts?
With how it's set up right now, it looks like you can combine them, 'cause they're treated and reviewed the exact same way, professional and medical.
So it makes sense to combine it, is that what you're saying?
It would make sense to combine them.
Well, I, I, this is a dumb question, but why would R1 not be appropriate?
It...
Does it, I mean, if, if you're a psychiatrist or psychologist, those get, those folks, patients sit home a lot.
Oh, yeah.
And, so you're just saying, no, you can't move into R1 if you're a psychologist or buy one of those nice houses.
Yeah. Again, I think that could be something that we address within the pers- or professional office category, like, again, going to that specific use, is stay at home and pu- like...
Right.
Working from home, 'cause I think it's become prevalent enough, and I think that so many people are using that as a resource, especially considering how many people are self-employed within Red Lodge and how limited space we have, as well as just revenue across the board. Working from home makes a lot of sense for people to actually be able to bring in income. Again, I could think of a masseuse, where you can come in and get a massage, it could be a psychiatrist, like, consulting, it could be architecture. I mean, I do a lot of real estate business from my back bedroom.
Okay, under per- under professional offices, do we have regulations for what they consider a home office versus a professional office? Um, I think that we have something in there about how many deliveries or the traffic coming and going. Do we have a backup there?
Good question.
Good question, good point.
Yeah, 'cause like, you look at something like a music teacher, for example.
That's true, yeah.
And you could narrow it down to which instrument.
Or just what time of day, keep it within the noise horn.
Yeah.
Or again, like, getting deliveries, I mean, I can, there's gonna be certain folks that that's part of their business, but there's gonna be that one gal down the street that loves Amazon just as much and might be getting just as many to a free.
Or more.
Or more. And so, those, those are things to consider, but I think it might just be smart to put some exclusions in there, 'cause it could be misinterpreted down the road.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, I, I think the reason, I think there's a different, the intent...
Mm-hmm.
Was not to include home oc- home occupations or somebody working out of their home.
Right.
Um, as, as a, for, I think it had more to do with, in a tr- basically taking a home and basically turning it into an office...
An office, right.
With a, with...
Non-residential use.
And a, basically, non-residential use.
It says a place of business for predominantly administrative, professional, clerical operations.
Yeah, so I think we just clean that up a little bit, and then...
So it's got nothing to do with home.
Right. Again, I just think it might be smart to make that very clear, 'cause...
So I, and I don't have a problem adding R1 to that list as a conditional use, because it's in residential. Just depending on what kinda office it is.
But I think Jeff, Jeff brought a good point, um, with regards to, um, and somehow, if there's a way we can categorize as ri- with, if it's a residential use combined or if it's just a, just a professional office.
If it's primarily a residential use with an auxiliary use of professional, that, that is excluded, I think makes sense.
Right, but if, if, you know, like, do we wanna see a bunch of professional offices scattered through our residential neighborhoods, just 'cause...
It's cheaper than buying, actually perverse usually, but...
Not really.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but, I mean, more so 'cause supply and demand, or supply is limited for commercial space, for professional offices, really. Um, you know, it takes a long time to get into a space that makes sense for your business.
And I think all of our R zones allow a home office already. It isn't, doesn't call it a professional, just a home office.
So, yeah, I just think making that very clear, that's all.
Can you work on that, Greg? Kinda making that distinction between home office versus a profes- professional, non-residential?
Predominantly, yeah, professional office.
Yeah.
You okay with that, John?
I am, I mean, I think, I think the way to look at it too is that they've hung a shingle and have people coming to do business in the home, right? I mean, that's, that's the difference. So it's, if you're work, um, like, I'll talk about, it's, like, that should be regulated, I think that's, you know, that, that's what I do inside my own walls. But when you have someone starting to come to the house for it, that's a different scenario.
And I think it would be good to be careful with the wording so as, so that it wouldn't suggest that it would be okay to have permanent yard sales.
Yeah.
A permanent one?
Yard sales.
Considering now they're commercial entities.
Yeah, I mean, that never should...
It's more than a temporary vendor permit at this point.
Does that mean they can't have two a year, or they, or it can't last longer than...
No more than sixty days consecutively.
All the time, the, the, and the, the stuff that's out there almost never gets moved, any of it, it's just a big old pile.
Well, it's sort of overpriced, honestly.
Bizarre.
Hoarding, vassarating as a yard sale.
It could be almost anything, you know, but...
Oh, it's like a goodwill. It is, but no one donates.
Moving on?
Yeah.
Um, drive-through facilities?
I'm all for making it conditional use in the north and south, commercial zones.
Yeah, I'm better with that.
It is conditional, right?
Yep.
So leave it as is?
That's what I would say.
And so this was one, uh, just 'cause we're gonna write a definition for it, 'cause there's not one, um, is the intention, or how you want the drive-through facilities to be, like, drive-through restaurant, coffee shops, or, we ran into the case on the one CUP last year, where it's connecting two rightaways and parking lots are sometimes referred to as facilities. So, we, we made them put up a gate, the adjacent property that was previously done, put up a gate. So, does that wanna be continued, or just stick to businesses without drive-through facilities?
We went through, we had a whole bunch of people upset about drive-through tellers and, 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 or, drive-through food facilities and all.
Coffee kiosk.
Yeah. And I think there was a whole lot of pushback at that, at one point. I can see where it might be okay to include it, but I think if you did, you'd wanna have more restrictions on it, so that you couldn't have the drive-through emptying out on De Broadway, for example, downtown, like, we were afraid would happen for a while. Or, some of the fast foods, perhaps, but I don't know, it would be concerned enough about not wanting to spoil all the restaurants, or if we'd be concerned about people being able to make a living, you know?
So if McDonald's wanted to come in, in our community entrance, and the drive-through is conditional, what grounds would we have to deny it?
Um, as Jeff said, public feedback would come in, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
But...
Well, I, I know that was, historically, that was a major concern of dealing with drive-throughs, that in terms of, at least from a restaurant, food service standpoint, that wanting to have some control over, over that, um, I don't know how you word it such a way to, um...
Likely?
Well, I, I, go ahead, Greg.
So Billings has, uh, they have queuing requirements. Queuing, like, you have to be able to queue X amount of cars, um, for a drive-through, and you basically have to, turning the site plan, showing that it'll queue five cars for this coffee shop.
Unless you're King's House.
Sure. New development.
Maybe that.
That's all they have? Is queuing requirements? Is that all they put on there, is queuing requirements?
I mean, they have all their other zoning rules too, but that's...
And probably parking, those people are not...
Yeah, that's just one thing they have when you...
It's a good idea.
For example, add in a coffee shop to a Walmart parking lot, and like, you have to queue X amount of cars so they get off King Avenue.
Yeah.
So we could give you an example of that.
Yeah, queuing makes sense to me, and I, I understand that we're trying to protect some of the downtown businesses too, and it might be that there's a limit of what is allowed or what is served. So, for instance, again, I haven't seen much issue with our coffee kiosks, um, that the City Brew there haven't really added traffic to that location. Bank tellers haven't been an issue, if anything, it helps people get on with their day. Um, I, I really just wish that they didn't have the only ATM for First Interstate right there by the window. I always feel bad using that, like, sorry.
You're holding up the line.
I know, and so I feel bad, uh, but again, I don't necessarily see an issue, it's the drive-through aspect. I think it's more so the community aspect that would be the problem. And so, again, I don't necessarily mind having restrictions on use versus driving through it or not.
I think the other consideration is also traffic. You know, if you, just think about the increase in traffic we have during the summer on 212 and Broadway, and, and having a drive-through that's trying to enter and exit off of Broadway. I mean, already, just think the trouble you have just cut, getting onto Broadway from a side street, add that to, to a high en- you know, a high-volume place like the fast food place. And it, so I think, maybe, as you think about, can you sort of think about that, Greg, and you and Jeremy, and kind of think about what sorts of conditions we could place?
It, it could be a, a traffic study, and making it a requirement of what time of year that traffic study is done. 'Cause I know that that's been done in the past, and people were upset about, well, that was the slow type.
Or how far apart their two driveways are.
Yeah.
Maybe by making them further apart, which would be good for traffic, it would also make that whole area not really a good spot for it.
Or it'd have to come off of a street that's not on the direct rightaway.
That's not on the map.
Well, I mean, I think about, like, where the soda hole is, back when that was Wells Fargo Drive-Thru.
Right.
And, again, that was so long ago, it feels like now, but I don't remember any, like, specific traffic issues because of that, do you?
Well, it's because it was coming onto Broadway, but coming, when you...
They came, and that's exactly it.
'Cause there were two, there were two different streets.
Yeah, you could, basically turned right there, and then came off of Oaks.
C3 North could, could say that you, you couldn't have both an entrance and an exit off of 212.
See, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm leaning to right there, is, 'cause, again, when you think about Bojoes, or technically that is, but... I don't know, I haven't seen a lot of people, like, stopping traffic turning in so far, I feel like there's more of an issue with Family Dollar for that, or even just the high school or the gas station. Might just be right after that turning lane, no, nevermind. But, yeah, and then, but, yeah, I think that the soda hole is a good example, back when that was Wells Fargo, where you came in from the backside and then exited onto 212. So you weren't really disrupting traffic.
Neither is what, so, yeah, so you could make it so that it would have to not exit and enter on the same...
Yeah. City Brew's a good example of that, too, you go in through the parking lot.
Go out the side street.
Mm-hmm.
And, and same with First Interstate Bank.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Thank you, Red Lodge, kind of, I guess, because now that's a weird side street, yeah.
'Cause you can't.
Yeah.
Is that something that could be done? To discourage that kind of a drive-through, if you insisted that they not enter and exit off the same...
The same driveway, at least, yeah. If you had two driveways as opposed to one, that, that's still better.
One's still a problem, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause the issue's gonna be not so much the coming out, 'cause they're gonna be stuck there in that queue, it's gonna be turning in to go to it.
And blocking the traffic behind you.
Yep. So unless there's a turning lane facilitating that, which...
Bojos, Bojos is really popular, that would be an issue, 'cause they're not that set backed up.
Yep.
I mean, you might have to, like, a setback requirement, or...
Yeah, well, again, I think the queuing would cover that, but more so the traffic on Broadway, that's, that would be my concern, unless you have a turn lane in the middle of the road, like, you could potentially down the line, 'cause again...
Yeah, no, it, it, it's a good example, I think, Chelsea, the queuing, because, like, I'll just use Bojoes, 'cause it's your, you shouldn't be able to turn in and order at that window. You should have to go around, back it around and be coming out to do your, to do your ordering, 'cause that's where you get the, the backup that's during the order...
Yep.
Order process.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there's also thinking and trying to see how much difference, and I'm not suggesting we get an additional roundabout, but how much difference a roundabout made? Because there was quite some time there where you couldn't, if you were going the, you couldn't turn in that direction, because...
You couldn't turn left off that forever.
And there's no plans for another roundabout except at Two Mile Bridge Road.
Except what?
At Two Mile Bridge Road.
Oh, well, possibility.
That's, that's the planned roundabout.
No, we're, so, you got enough direction, Greg, to kind of flesh this out a little bit? John, we're at twenty after, so I'm gonna try to wrap this up, do you have any thoughts or comments on the drive-through?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, are we...
We're closed.
We did good.
Close to that section.
So we pick up next time, or, well, maybe we'll pick up again at drive-through facilities?
Yeah.
Continue the discussion?
We're in search of some ways you could do it, and there's about eight or nine ways you can...
All right.
Run out of traffic, so...
Are we good? So, next is, uh, written correspondence, staff communications.
Yeah, next week, conditionally, or next meeting, conditional use permit for the Black Canyon Bistro. Or, no, it's the other one, Anglers and multifamily housing.
Okay. And then, the other one that's coming up is, uh, the bistro?
That'll be the bistro, yeah.
Is that, any, you have any idea when that might be?
We just got responses submitted, um, earlier this week, or late, late last week. We just got responses submitted, um, earlier this week, or late, late last week, maybe Friday. So, if it's complete, we should, should be able to do that one end of October still.
So, the next two meetings in October.
Yeah.
Are both gonna be conditional uses.
But the, the, we would anticipate the Black Canyon bistro one being fairly.
The other one's gonna be allowed.
Mayor?
Are, are you, are you asking for staff first ones or you go, asking for public comment?
Uh, well, I guess I'm thinking of you as staff.
Okay, um, I have, I have, uh, nothing to add to staff that I won't handle in public comment.
Okay. All right. Uh, public comment?
I see no one on the line, but.
Go ahead.
Um, a, a couple of things. Some of this, and I didn't hear that we got to the marijuana business today, but I did go out and, and chat with that gal. Um, and, and her cons- I, I think her concerns were swayed by knowing that, that it doesn't impact her. She was afraid of, of being booted. She did have a comment or suggestion in her mind as kind of a zoning. Um, I know there's been conversations about, do we wanna have it on in, in the downtown business district, which right now is easier. But she had an idea that I thought worth noting and, and just making a note that I will share in her absence, which is if, if it was decided that it was gonna be in the, in the downtown business districts or in that downtown area, that it may be possible that it say that it can't have a Broadway address. So, that kept it right off of Broadway and it kind of kept the side street. So, that was an idea that she had. Note that I had taken during all the conversations on conditional use, um, and, and, and I, while I understand and appreciate the conversations of letting people know that it's there, um, then there's an, there's an additional element. You create a counter perception, um, where people think or feel that gives them the right to a neighbor veto. And I think that kind of tied into some of Chelsea's comments of what grounds are there to deny. Um, and, and so, you know, I, I, I said, I think if there's gonna be a conditional use, and I think I heard two or three comments. I don't know if it was John, I think it was John also, like, looking at stuff that creates obstacles, but at the same time workload for this group and, and to what is the extent, you know? So, so, and I think that conditional use for public awareness side, um, we, we have all sorts of people that I've witnessed in my years here that come in and are under the impression they get to veto it. So, whether it's a, maybe it's the, maybe it, what it does is it says they have to notify everybody within a certain or something else, or maybe a mechanism other than conditional use, if that's the primary reason it's there. Um, and then, uh, I had a note on the drive-through residence, cause, and, or drive-throughs, and I think you kind of already gathered it, because way back when, that was basically designed to keep McDonald's off of Broadway, sort of a thing. But how do you say that without saying that? And it sounds like you're already researching that. Um, and then the other thing was the working at home. Um, my understanding, and I think somebody already alluded to this, was the legal basis you have to do that is not what you're doing with your per- with your private property, but it's impacting traffic and excessive deliveries and stuff, and that has an impact on the other neighbors. And I think that's where I would limit anything to do with that conversation. And then, last but not least, the aforementioned perpetual yard sale, I would just mention, is being addressed from a city standpoint right now, so.
I think there's already ordinances, isn't there? I mean, there's already an ordinance.
There, there, and there's, um, yeah, there's kind of some, some, uh, we, we, working with the, with the police and legal, just from a general public health and safety thing. Um, I, I think the appropriate place to address stuff like that is probably through ordinances, not through zoning.
Right, I agree.
So, that was, that was all the things that I sat on my hands for, while you guys were having your discussion.
You were so quiet.
Yeah.
Jeff threatened to beat me if I didn't, so.
Yeah.
I'm for you, Jeff.
That's why the gavel's there.
I'm such a moony.
So, anyway, that was all I had. Thank you, sir.
All right. Anybody else have anything, comments?
I see no comments online, Mr. Chair.
All right, we're adjourned.
Hey, Jeff. Jeff?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so I won't be here in October, those two meetings, cause I'm gonna be out of the country, remember? I just wanted to make sure you knew the next two meetings I won't be here.
All right, good to know.
John, you're gonna have fun, I just believe.